Let's go and welcome back to another week of Talking Trophies. We are remaining consistent, we're on a roll three weeks and we're back. Somali Steve.
We're doing well.
How you feeling?
I'm feeling good.
I'm not gonna lie, I was meant to take today off, but we're here, we're hustling, we're doing it for the Deves and Davies. Actually, they got four wisdom teeth removed last Saturday. And apparently, I'm meant to take a week and a bit off, but I'm here because I love the hustle. I love the grind, I'm here for you Deves and Davies. But this week, we actually got a special guest. This guest, um, he's done a lot, let's just say that. He's done something that, let's just say, for the last twenty years, a lot of people have been trying to do. Um, it's very admirable, it's very, something we should all admire and kids should be inspired by it as well as us as adults as well should be aspire to do something similar to him. Not specifically what he's doing, but something along the lines of the impact he's having. It's your boy councillor Mohammed Simra. Thanks for jumping on.
My guy, thanks for having me, man. It's always a pleasure to come here.
Yeah, so locked in contract with Talking Trophies.
Locked in, man.
Locked in another one.
You went by me in a different podcast.
Yes, make sure you hit the subscribe button, Deves and Davies, this is where it's at. By the way, we need the subscribers, as in because the algorithm, every time someone subscribes, if you're not subscribed, hit the subscribe button because the algorithm is playing up because we've been away for a while, I don't know, it's playing a bit hard to get. But Mohammed Simra, how you been, man?
I've been blessed, bro, can't complain.
Congrats firstly, I wanna say congrats on getting elected as councillor of Melbourne on. But there's a specific area, you like the, it's called the Bandu, Bandu Ward, wait.
Yeah, it's burned up ward.
Burned up ward, yeah.
So Melbourne on is up into seven wards and you can live wherever in Melbourne on, but choose to run in any ward. So you don't have to live in your ward to run there, but you have to live within Melbourne on or have a business there.
And you chose a specific Bandu.
I chose a specific one, yeah. Um, it was definitely a long journey, hard fought campaign.
Yeah.
And a lot of things came into play when I was deciding where to run and, and, and how to go about it.
You did try the last election to run, did you run for a similar role? What did you, what did you run last election, you ran for?
So I, I ran as a councillor, but I ran in a different ward.
Yep.
And that was twenty twenty, so during COVID, obviously a different campaign, you know what I mean? It was locked down. And for me, when I ran in twenty twenty, I ran with no strategy. I honestly put my hands up because, you know, as, as you said before, a, a lot of us have been trying to do it for, for a long time and getting into that position and being able to do, have the impact that you have is very important for our community. And that's something we haven't had in a very long time, someone at the table.
Congrats on that, bro. I'm gonna, I'm gonna chuck a quick curveball topic. This is something that's been trending the last few weeks and it's everywhere and I, I find a lot of Africans, especially African diasporas, speaking about this Ibrahim Traore.
Yeah, my guy.
He's been all over the news, everyone's speaking about him. Uh, Somali Steve, just search something up on Chat G P T about him, like, let's just get a basic understanding of who he is, just for the Deves and Davies that don't know. But seeing someone, he's thirty-three, thirty-three, thirty-six, I can't remember exactly.
He's young, he's young.
He's young and he had a military revolution. He wasn't happy with the state of the country and said, okay, we want to make, bring back nationalism to this country, improve the circumstances of this country and rather than having imperialism shadowing the country, he said, let's free this country and be ourselves, be our best pretty much. How do you see it? Not, obviously, we're not saying revolution wise, but like, how do you see it as a young African Australian? That's right, that's in council, it's in position of authority, how do you take inspiration from what he's done in a way?
So when I think about Ibrahim, I think of a transformal, transformational leader, right? You know, you have a lot of leaders in Africa that come and start speaking the same rhetoric. I didn't want change, they want growth and they want to develop. But the problem is, no one's prepared to actually change the system. Or, you know, um, have honest conversations about what's wrong and what's, and, and what's holding Africa back. So I think Ibrahim, what makes him such a great leader and I think he's gonna do very, very well. And even the past two years, what he's been able to do in bringing back that sense of pride, you know, within, within his country. Um, it's, he started by changing the system and acknowledging that that's what needs to change. Um, because I feel like any leader that comes within the system, if they play, um, to the role and accept the status quo, there's not really much that can happen because there's so many outside stakeholders that are involved within Africa.
Guys, when you, Af- Africa is like an IPO, you know, when a business goes public in Wall Street? That's what Africa is. As soon as a new leader comes in, everyone's trying to get a bit of a share. Everyone's trying to be a shareholder.
You'd be surprised, not like all the minefields, all the gold fields, it's not owned by, by the actual country.
Yeah.
It's all outside multinational companies.
Bikini Faso is trying to change.
Yeah, so he nationalized all of like the, the mining, um, like the farms and all of them and he's kicked out, he kicked out France.
Yeah.
Which obviously still has its imperialist hold.
Yeah.
In Bikini Faso.
How many assassination attempts are we on right now?
Guys, we gotta check, I reckon it's like seventeen, the last I checked.
I heard eighteen, man.
Eighteen now, yeah, went up there, yeah, 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 they, they've been trying to get this guy out, it's, it's, it's crazy, running for power, running for power and having that many people trying to take you out.
That's what comes with trying to change the system.
That's true.
Yeah, so many people are trying to hold it up and protect it.
Hmm, I think because you, you, you know what it is, I think personally, everyone does wanna change. I think people do come into, like, I think African leaders do come into power and they're like, yeah, let's make a change. Then they see the money they can get from it and I'm not gonna lie, I'm not even gonna be a hero, I'm not gonna be a hero here. When I see some of the numbers, hey, look, we, some French guy comes to me and tells me, hey, listen, bro, there's an offshore account ready for you. These accounts are running, I'm running three fake dodgy businesses where you're gonna be a billionaire.
Yeah.
I kinda get why they get thrown off and distracted from their mission, you know what I mean? And it's not the right thing, but like, you could tell even this guy, Ibrahim Traore, he's trying to hold on to his values by wearing the same attire as the people, always being around the military individuals that he was trained up with. And I think that's what he's trying to do to keep him from getting distracted.
Yeah, and he's also cut the salaries of like all of the cabinet members and MPs by thirty percent.
Yeah.
So when we speak about corruption, like corruption is everywhere and corruption is, is I think something that Africa is facing with a lot. Um, but what needs to happen is processes need to be set up. So if, if, if you look at Australia, even if you look at council, right? We have an entire department that ensures our governance is done right, that there are checks and balances and, 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 and all of that stuff that is separate from the leaders, that makes sense. And, and to go back to your question, bro, um, I seek inspiration from everywhere, bro, because I understand the position that I'm in and, and I understand like what it took to get here. I am an African, visibly African, I'm a visibly Muslim by my name, Mohammed, and, and I'm young. So that's a trifecta of, you know, barriers and obstacles.
The odds on you, yeah, the odds against you, yeah.
The odds are against me, bro, Islamophobia last year was six hundred percent, you know? Um, and, you know, I've had people tell me, oh Mohammed, you know, you should change your name to a more electoral name.
Moi Simra. Moi Simra can get the numbers done.
No, that, that's what some things I was hearing, you know, change your name and I, I, I was, when I was door knocking, you know, some people weren't answering. So there's a lot of stuff that you face when trying to do something that no one else has done before or been able to do that you might, there, there was time I said, is this even worth it? But, but then I remembered like why I was doing it. And that was to make it easier for like other young people that wanna run in the future, that's.
Do you think the power of change right now is with young people?
Hundred percent, and, and I think you have older people, you know, our, our seniors, you know, our seniors, that need to be prepared to let that happen and to let that growth, you know?
Look, I'm not gonna lie to you, I agree with you that change does have to come from young people, but I also disagree with you because I feel like there is a wisdom, I don't know, I wouldn't say maybe the older generation of Africans. I don't think they got everything right, I think they came here with the little knowledge they have, started families and open shop.
Sorry, so I, I'm not specifically talking about Africans.
Just in, okay, in general.
I'm speaking about in general.
Yeah.
Um, you know, but, but if you wanna speak about like.
No, no, we can, we can do in general, I'm happy to do in general, but I'm saying like even in general, okay, let's just go broader as Australians. There is mistakes, there is advantages, there is disadvantages that we can take from the older generation or what they did right or what they did wrong, there's some things they probably look back and say, hey, I regret this, don't make this mistake. I think right, rather than saying the system is messed up, there are flaws in it, but look at us, we're comfortably doing a podcast. Yeah, you know what I mean, there are benefits of it as well. So I'm saying like, we should be looking maybe to the older people, with through the eyes of like, hey, let's make a change and make this a better country, but looking into the elders, older people, older generation saying, hey, what do you think we should do or seeking the advice from them, rather than just saying, no, no, we, we young people know what's good for the country, we need to make this change.
So it's, it's not necessarily saying we know what's good for the country, but I think, so, so two things, um, that need to happen. The older generation need to be, be prepared to pass over knowledge, right? There are a lot of, I think, you know, very skilled, exceptional leaders, even when we talk about within our own community. But there needs to be this acceptance of, you know, passing that down, uplifting and investing and identifying and investing in the young generation so that they can one day, um, you know, be in that position as well. And another one comes for, and, and another thing I wanna touch on is the importance of when we think about even how we make our decisions, a lot of the times we're not centering youth voice. And I look at, I look at council in particular, when, and, and these are conversations that I'm having right now, right? So how can we in every decision we make, center youth voice to ensure that, because there's a large percentage of our community that's not getting a say.
Yeah, but then if, let's look at the.
If we disregard young people.
No, I, I get that, go search up, go write Melbourne on city council, age brackets by percentages. And then you can, let's just say, let's just say if it's, it is thirty percent young people or it is.
It's a young community.
What's, what's the, what's the Adrian, you don't have to search it up, we, we gotta fact check, Somali Steve, search it up. Melbourne on city council, how do you spell Melbourne on, bro, that's, is that an indigenous name?
I've struggled to even say Melbourne on for the past like.
What's the meaning? What's the meaning of Melbourne on? Come on! I know it's an indigenous word, man, surely. You got the stats, bring it up.
You used to be called Fuskei?
Yeah, you shouldn't just say that, Fuskei, Melbourne on is a tough one.
It's a tough one, yeah, it's even a tough one to spell, man.
I don't even spell it, I don't even attempt to spell it. So what is it? No, just do stats, do percentage. Yeah, so we can see what the percentage is. Okay, so this is the, okay, based on the valid information, the age range of current councillors, no, because I'm saying the, 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 the population, the general population of people that live in the Melbourne on city council. Putting you under pressure, Somali Steve. Oh, yeah, say like, um, not the councillors, the actual population, bit of pressure.
Based on population?
Yeah.
What's the percentage of young people in Melbourne on?
Population, what is the, the age percentage of individuals? On average?
So we are getting a lot, a lot of young professionals that are moving into, um, Melbourne.
Oh, we got here.
That wanna live close to the.
Okay, so age brackets, you're right, actually, you're actually right, because if you go percentage.
A majority are under the age of forty-four, you know what I mean?
So you got, yeah, you got thirteen percent from fifteen to twenty-four, twenty percent from twenty-five to thirty-four, seventeen percent, so already, you already got thirty-three, you're looking at fifty percent under forty, so you are right, yeah, so I get what you're saying, bro.
It's a very young community and I think when, when it comes to me, it's, it's, it's unacceptable if we are, if we are putting out, um, and then this is for all councils, this is in general, right? As government, if we know that there's a large percentage of young people and the consultations that we're doing to community have a majority of people that are over forty, for example.
Yeah.
Right?
Like it, it'd be dumb to have someone over sixty-five.
Yeah, yeah.
When someone between fifty-five and sixty-four years old, it's only nine point two percent and they're having, let's just say, a vote in, yeah, yeah, I get what you're saying, bro.
Fact, so the, yeah, so me, when it comes to decision making, it's very important that as a, as a government,
Yeah.
that we center youth voice to ensure that we're doing things right. Because we might do things wrong that, you know, a lot of young people end up falling through the cracks or not, or not reaping the benefits from it.
Yeah, that's true. Talk, tell me about the journey to becoming, of becoming a councillor. So when you came on last time, you were talking about, you know, overcoming your battles with speech impairment, stuttering, um, what's getting started into youth work and, uh, working on Endeavour Youth Australia as well.
Yep.
Now you're a councillor, so it's just, you're still doing Endeavour Youth, but there's a massive shift in personality. We're calling you councillor Mohammed Simra from now on, because you, we don't see this often, you know what I mean? And by the way, you are half Eutrian as well, did you say half Eutrian?
My grandma's Eutrian.
Oh, come on, I was gonna take credit for that, but shout out Sudanese, we love our Sudanese community as well, bro. Um, but.
Oh man, I love Eutria.
Yeah, shout out Eutria, but, um, so it feels good seeing someone that's a quarter Eutrian, we'll take that.
I'll, I'll even claim half, man.
Yeah, claim the half, but we, we love to see it, but, um, tell me that journey of changing and becoming a councillor. How hard was it, what was probably the biggest challenge as well?
So the biggest challenge for me is obviously, you know, I work full time in Endeavour Youth Australia and last year I had to invest a lot of time into campaigning because I understood that I, I wanted to give it a real shot. And I, I wanted to, you know, not look back and say that I could have done more. So the biggest struggle that I had was running as an independent, right? So if you look at Labour, Greens and any of the parties, Liberals, they have big machines behind them. But as an independent, you fund your own campaign, uh, you have to run a grassroots campaign and you have to rely on, on actual support from, from your community. So I took time off from Endeavour Youth Australia, um, to really focus on running a strong campaign.
Tell, tell me, tell me why you chose to run independent, um, obviously, we all know the big parties, the big two, uh, Labour and Liberal, and then there's the, obviously, the Greens that, um, are the third biggest party in Australia. Why, there is a rise in Australia, why are people choosing to run as independent?
So it was important that I ran as independent, bro, because I wanted to be accountable for my own decisions, right? And responsible for my own decisions. I think what happens is you get, you know, people that might belong to a party that have to vote a certain way that might come, already come with, you know, preconceived, you know, ideas and, and, and beliefs depending on the party that they belong to, you know what I mean? But, but as an independent, I only answer to the community. And it makes my decision making more consistent.
Yep.
And I know that the buck stops with me. And I can speak about whatever I wanna speak about and I, so I'm, I'm in an interesting position in Melbourne on, so I'm the swing vote, I, I.
The balance of, uh.
The balance of power, yeah.
Yes.
It's a very interesting position, there's three Greens, three Labour and I'm the only independent.
Yep.
Which means that there's obviously times where a, a contentious decision might be left on me to decide the outcome of it. And I take that responsibility very, very seriously and I know the weight of my role, but I think it's very important that we all work together and that's what we've been doing now as, as, as a council and I've been kind of wanting to, to facilitate that more.
So, all right, you're the balance of power, so you, let's just say hypothetically, the green side, there, there's a, there's, there's a, there's a vote on a campaign, on, on something changing in the council. Green party say, hey, this is our, this is what we wanna focus on, this is our agenda, Labour go, this is our agenda. So it's between you, what do you do as an independent? Do you go, the people voted me in, I'm gonna, because they believe I am capable of making decisions in the best interest of my community? Or do you go, hey, this is coming up and speak to people in your community?
So you touched on a very important point. I, I got elected and I got elected for a reason. I ran on some important, um, campaign issues, right?
Yep.
So I take that into account. Another thing I take, take into account is my own values and my own morals, that's two. And another thing is, I understand that, you know, i- is we make the best decisions when we all work together collectively. There shouldn't always be winners and losers. So there is, you know, what, what, what group A thinks, what group B thinks, and then there's a third alternative and that's the compromise. So I think I've, you know, m- more often than not, I always try and find the compromise when we can't make that decision. Um, but obviously, if something is important for me and my, my, and my community, that's when I can, you know, leverage that a bit more. But we make our best decisions when, when we think about what is everyone happy enough with? Or is everyone happy to live with? Because we are all seven councils representing the entire municipality. And there's obviously gonna be situations where there's, there's a certain issue that's, that is specific only to a small area. And yeah, so there, there's a lot of things to take into consideration, but one thing that I try to do is make my decision making consistent.
Yep.
And if it's done by your values, your morals and of, of the backing of community, so if anything is contentious, anything's contentious, I'm going back for more consultation.
Consultation with who?
More consulting with the community. So I, I, I'll give you an example, let's just say, so you say council is planning to close down, um, an entire street permanently. And there's a lot of people on that street that don't want it all, or council is proposing that we add bike lanes on the entire street, but that means we'll take away all the parking.
Kazee, get rid of the bike lanes, I'm sick of the, I'm sick of the bike lanes, bro, and I'm sick of the fines because the parking fines, because there's no parking, firstly, let me say something, if, if I move to the Melbourne on city council, the first permit I'm gonna get signed is no more parking fines. You can park wherever you want, whenever you want, because I'm sick of it.
Bro, how do you think we'll make our money?
That's what I'm saying, it's just a business, man, the government is the biggest business.
The bikes gotta go though.
The bikes gotta go, stop riding bikes.
With that, I'm gonna have to disagree with you, bro, when it comes to bikes.
What, what do you mean?
So, so I ran on active transport, so I ran, and the reason why I ran, I ran active transport, because I wanna make sure that, you know, um, um, the area is more walkable, but also that we're making it safer for, for kids to ride their bike from their homes to school, you know? Um, there's a lot of cars in the area, right?
Hmm.
And I, I'll be driving down the road and, and I see kids riding on busy roads like on the street. So a conversation needs to be had on how can we, you know, ensure that the area is more connected with our cycling, cycling infrastructure? And we are making it easier for people to get around the area and, and less on their cars, but also acknowledge that, you know, like people do own cars.
Yeah.
Um, so that's, that's, that's the battle that we are facing right now as a community. There's, there's, there's a large number of the community want bicycle infrastructure, but also another half don't want their car parking taken. So there's, there's streets where it makes sense and, 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 and that's what we can do today. And there's others where we're gonna have to go to consultation. So if anything's contentious, we, I don't have to make a decision, I wouldn't have to make a decision on it. I will make sure that we prolong this as long as possible until we hear from as much of the community as possible. So then when I make a decision, I can say, I know that I keep feeling confident and taking accountability for this, knowing I've spoken to my community and I'm happy to.
I know that, how are you speaking to your community, like, are you going door knocking and be like, hey, listen, I'm the councillor, do you want this or this, like, yes or no?
So what I don't do, I don't go on my own and go door knocking for a particular issue, that might show a bit of bias. So in that case, if it's a street and, 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 and some of the people don't want bicycle lanes and other people want bicycle lanes, I'll take an officer with me, right? I'll take one of our officers with me so that we can do that properly. So then it's, it, it's not me having my bias.
Yeah.
Um, so we just wanna ensure that there's transparency and that people trust the process. And, you know, there's obviously things that I am very, very passionate about, but I understand that I didn't get elected as, um, as, as, as one person, right? There, there, there were like hundreds, thousands of people that have voted for me. Um, so it's important that I take him with me on, on, on the journey of decision making.
Yeah.
And that's one thing that frustrated me so much with government in general, is that there isn't genuine consultation with community. It's a decision is made and, and if consultation is done, it's done tokenistically. Um, we wanna be able to tailor consultation. You know, if wanna work with young people, meet them at their schools, right? Work with grassroots community if we're trying to reach the African community, if we're trying to reach marginalized communities. Don't just, we can't just put our information out there and expect people to come when there's obviously all these barriers for them to access and be a part of those processes. But what I would say is, you know, I gotta plug up my council, we actually do a good job at this. Um, obviously, we can do better and we are doing better and, and, and that's why it's important that, you know, that one percent of councils are under thirty. Um, me and Susan Yangi, we are one of the two only African councils in Victoria, I'll even go as far as to say, maybe even Australia.
Yeah.
So even being on that table, um, bringing the experience as, you know, as being a migrant and a refugee.
Yeah.
And being a decision maker, bro, a lot of stuff can happen.
Okay, so in Victoria, there's, there is a massive rise, um, independent councillors, five hundred and ninety-three out of six hundred and forty-seven, so approximately ninety-two percent of councillors are independent. Um, and I think this is across Australia in general, actually. The only states is Queensland, New South Wales and I can't see exactly where people, the, the parties are the majority. So we can see there is a massive transition in Australia.
But what I would say is, is that you get a lot of people that are affiliated, right? So they might not be endorsed, but they are party members, if that makes sense. So that isn't a, I think, a good representation of, of, they, 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 there's something that is called the true independent.
Yep.
Right, that isn't a member or affiliated with a party.
Yep.
Um, so a, a lot of people might run as unendorsed councillors, uh, uh, unendorsed candidates and get elected as independents, but they are a part of the party. And if you're a part of the party, then you have to kind of, um, follow the guidelines and the rules.
Do you feel like because you're an independent, you have the freedom to speak on matters that may impact you, for example, or may, so like you have a, you have a, you have a connection to it, for example, let's just say, perfect example is Fatima Payne, Payney?
Payman.
Fatima Payman.
Payman, yeah.
In, was in the Labour Party, she was a senator, right? And what happened was she spoke on Palestine and they said, hey, yo, chill out on that, we're not trying to go that intense, we're, we're against it, but like, we're not that against it. And then she goes, no, 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 I'm, this is a genocide happening, I wanna speak on it as much as I can. And she got a call from Albanese saying, hey, yo, cut it. And then she probably pretty much left the party, right, and she's running as independent, independent, right, or?
So she started her own party called Australia Voice.
Okay, Australia Voice.
Yeah, and so she ran a couple of, she ran a couple of.
Birthplace Kabul, Afghanistan.
She was young when she, she got elected as a senator, you know that, yeah, I think she was like twenty-seven.
Joined the party twenty, twenty fourteen, Senate elected twenty twenty-two, becoming the first Australian, Afghan Australian and first hijab wearing Muslims. Shout out to hijabi Deves, Deves by the way. Um, and yeah, she resigned from the party twenty-four, twenty-four, so, okay, she spoke on Palestine, she felt like.
Say something, bro, we need more sisters in, 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 um, politics, bro.
You reckon?
Running.
You reckon? Like really, like, do you reckon we need it?
No, I think, you know, we need a lot of representation.
Do you think we need more representation in?
In politics in general?
Yeah. Do you think?
I think we need more representation, um, in, across leadership position, across all sectors.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, if we look at universities.
Like, I, I get that, no, no, what I was, why I was questioning it is like, what, what pathways are there for them to get into those positions? Because we say, you spoke about you being, you see, you spoke about you being a black Muslim, your name's Mohammed, African descent, all right? That's cool, you can break the ice pretty quick, but once you're like, being a hijabi, Kaz, is.
It's not easy, it's not easy.
It's not easy, like even being a black, let's just say, being like a listen, African hijabi woman, even around other Africans, they feel a bit funny around you, Kaz, like, I know that, like hijabis feel awkward around other hijabis.
Can I say, can I say it, because I understand that, the biggest influence isn't even being elected, right? There are, there's policy, you know what I mean, there's, there's, if you look at, you know, people that work in, um, in, 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 in offices, um, people that support advisors, there's a lot of positions around, um, elected officials.
Yeah.
Even if you look at council in general, right? Officer positions, um, the bureaucrats, the people that actually push the work and involve in the day to day. I think that's where we need, you know, um, um, more, more representation from our boys and our girls.
I personally think, look, I, I think I, I, from, from what I've seen growing up, I think African girls, um, and hijabi girls as well are excelling more than the guys, a hundred percent.
Hundred percent, our girl doing far better than us.
But I think, I think from what I've heard and obviously discussions having is, they have this thing, it's like, do I wanna compromise my identity? One thing I, I give, I give props to you, I give props to you, is you're mute off camera, look, you do speak like a politician a little bit. Somali Steve confirmed, but like, some of the answers, I was like, I was like, Kazee, is this guy with the Labour or the Liberal Party? The way he's explaining this, like.
It's the trick of the trade, man.
You know what I mean? But like, generally, you're, you're off camera.
Yeah.
Yeah? And it's not.
So I'm not mute right now, is what you're saying?
No, no, you are you, no, no, some of the way you answer the questions, I'm looking at him, I'm like, all right, which party are you running for next? But the idea that you don't have to compromise who you are, but some people do feel like it. And I think sometimes even hijabis, hijabi Muslim, African Muslims feel it the most.
Yep.
Yeah? And I'm not talking about like, oh, do they sound white or for example like this, it's just like them, when they get seen, they're just like, oh damn. They have that double thought, do I, should I compromise who I am, you know what I mean? A perfect example is like even like workplace handshakes and hugs and stuff, people don't feel comfortable doing it, but it's like, how do I say that?
And the reason why I don't feel comfortable, right, is because a lot of these places, but they're not culturally safe. Like they're not, they're not culturally safe, so it's not even a system, um, where it will be safe for them to be in, you know what I mean? Um, in, in, in most cases, so.
For both the guys and the girls?
For the boys.
Kazee, I'm, I don't know, I just turned super woke, I don't know, this is the only time I'm doing this, I'm going back to being conservative.
Oh, Rave you Allah.
Listen, I want.
Go Allah.
Hey, I wanna talk about. Hey, I wanna talk about, um, twenty fifteen, this is your first viral moment. You know what I mean? I wish TikTokers around then, cause you would have had two point five million views. The Apple incident.
Start of the role, man.
That's where you started. I just wanna, how much of influence did it have on you? Because by the way, the CEO of, CEO of Apple, Tim Cook, made a statement on this. Yeah? How influential was this moment that you're sitting here now as a councillor?
I'll be honest, man.
What'd you wanna do before, like, Leadership Superior? Did you wanna be a basketball player, soccer player, something?
Honestly, but I didn't even know what I wanted to do.
Yeah.
So I was probably like scraping past school, but I'll be honest, like, back then, year ten, I was taking the piss, you know, I was, was, was with a lot of the boys. But I think what happened, you know, with Apple, it was the first time where I saw, oh, like, you know, maybe I can create change. You know, cause before then, obviously racism happens, you know what I mean? We'd be on the train, ticket inspector passes, everybody goes straight to you. You know, you go into a store, you get followed. How about this? I was once handcuffed on the floor for fifteen minutes, um, for mistaken identity.
Oh, same. Oh.
I'm telling you.
No, no, I've, I've had that, I've had that.
Let me tell you the story, bro, bro.
How bad was it?
It was, bro, it was cooked, yeah? So I just leave a, a cafe, yeah? I jump in the car with two of my mates, and as we get in the car, we're at a, a, a busy survey.
Was this in Footscray?
No, no, it was, it was in St Albans. So it was a busy survey, connected to a cafe, and mind you, there's a lot of people walking around. As I get in my car, I'm in the backseat, I see the police. They come and they just stop, turn on the high beams. And then my, my mate at the time was driving, and he was like, are they high beaming at us? I got out the car. As I get out the car, this happens. Both police officers get out, guns drawn. Get on the floor, get on the effing floor, like yelling and stuff. And around that time was the same time that Michael Brown, um, one of the, um, people, one of the African Americans, I've got shot. So.
Oh, you want B L N vibes? They better tuck my, they better tuck my face on a shirt. Wrap it up.
I'm looking behind me, I'm like, nah, I'm not trying to get shot. So I get down, my, my, my mate gets down. And then the, um, the other mate that was driving starts yelling, he's like, no, this is racist, we're not. Another police car comes, guns drawn. The lady comes close to him, she pistol-whips him, bro. She pistol-whipped him.
Damn.
No way.
Yeah. And then, you know, we're handcuffed and I'm like, you know, go inside the cafe and speak to them. And they'll tell you that we were there for the past three hours. I'm like, what happened? They're like, oh, there, there was an incident in the area and, you know, we're, we're, we're just concerned. And I'm like, I understand there's an incident in the area. What does that have to do with me? You know what I mean? And it took us fifteen minutes of, of pleading for them to go inside and speak to the owner, for them, for us to be released. And then after that, it, it wasn't even like our apology or anything. So there, there are a lot of instances of racism that happen out there in our community that we just.
Yeah, I had, I had a similar, I had, I had a similar incident like the day before I went to Canada, in Footscray. That's why I'm traumatized. I've got a bit of trauma. I don't go to Footscray, Kaz, anymore, Kaz, but, um.
Uh, uh, we, we're trying to change the narrative of Footscray.
Oh, no, no, no. Kaz, and you know what, Kaz? You know what? How about this? I'm not gonna lie to you.
I've, I've heard some crazy names of Footscray.
No, bro, this was like, I'm just like, I'm gonna get a.
Footscrazy.
Yeah, footsbrazy. But, um, it was like the day I was going overseas, so I'm just like, I'm gonna get a haircut. Same place where the Abdul Fatah Hamid guy got shot, Al-Ahram. But what happened was, the exact same spot, I was like, oh my god, that happened to me. Me and my boy were walking and then some cops were like following us. I'm like, that's a bit weird, why are they following me? Some guy does a burner right in front of us, they, and drove past them, they did nothing. Anyways, a van comes past through the window shotgun, get the f on the ground. I looked, I said, this is too embarrassing, man. The whole African community is here. I'm not gonna get caught. Guess what I did? I chucked a U-turn, I started walking straight to the wall, Kaz. I walked straight to the wall. Then I just went, I just went down like this. They cuff me up, searched my pockets. The guy looks in my pocket, I had three and a half thousand dollars in my pocket. I said, you take a, I said, don't even take a cent from it. And then he goes, what are you doing with this, mate? I'm like, I'm leaving the country, you dog. My passport's in the other pocket. He checks the other pocket, my passport's there. And then after that, he goes, uh, he's starting, I just started roasting this guy. He uncuffed me. I said, hey, sorry, mistaken identity. Apparently there was someone on the train with machetes and stuff. I'm like, what does this have to do with me? What, he's got a fresh top? Well, that narrows it down to another thousand people in this area. But, yeah, I, I get the same.
It's wild, bro, it's wild. So, you know, we have to compete with so many narratives out there. And stigmas and, yeah, bro, and when you do get into, you know, certain positions, it just gets harder, cause you feel like you gotta prove yourself all the time. Now they. Alhamdulillah, that's what we say, alhamdulillah.
Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah, always, always. All praise is due to Allah. Um, I wanna say, uh, now that you're in a position of power, no, I wouldn't say power, like in council.
Prominence.
Yeah, good word. But, um, what was the word? Prominence? Oh, like, that's a crazy word. Um, now that you're in a position of prominence, do you feel like you have to have a say on everything now? Let's just say everyone's advocating for something. Do you feel like you have to put in your, have your two pieces on it? I, I tend to find there's a few people that get into advocacy and they're like, let me speak on every single matter now.
Nah, so look, the biggest thing that I probably had to challenge with, cause obviously before, you know, politics, I was a big activist and, 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 and advocate, right? Um, so now being a part of council, I know that, you know, what I say, um, carries a lot more weight. So I try and always stand up for what I believe in. And I'll always talk and back, you know, what is important to me and my community. Um, but yeah, bro, I, I don't feel like I have any pressure. Like, I'll, I'll be honest with you. It's like, it was nothing I didn't sign up for. So a, a, a lot of people, when they do get into this position, if they haven't been exposed to a lot of like the bullshit of the world, you know what I mean? Then they might get a.
They get sucked in. That's what I'm saying. Don't get sucked in.
No, never that.
I think, I think generally, like, cause I always, I, I see people get like, for example, into like advocacy and human rights and becoming activists and stuff. And feel like they have to speak about every single situation that's happening in the world, where it's like, hey, you don't have real knowledge on this. Understand this.
Facts.
Look into this.
Yeah.
Some, I'm not someone that jumps into everything. I think the divs and Davies know that. They're watching. They're like, okay, Ravee is not really like the biggest, I'm not the biggest activist. I, I know when injustice is there and I'll speak and I'll be like, hey, this is not right. But like, I feel like sometimes I'm just like, do we have to jump into everything and full heartedly?
And what it is, yeah, I, bro, it's very important for me that I'm genuine. You know what I mean? I'm genuine in, in what I do. But it's hard, right? Because if we look at government and politics more in general, you can't be genuine in a system where everyone's being strategic. You know what I mean? Um, I was sat at a panel the other day on ethical leadership. You know, and we were asked the question, you know, how do you balance your being an ethical leader with everything that comes with politics? And honestly, man, that was a very, very hard answer to.
What'd you say? Did you give him political answer?
Um, I gave an honest answer, man.
Yeah. What'd you say? What'd you say?
Political answers are always honest. No, I was, look, this is what I said. I said, you have to understand what your values are, right? Cause that's what's gonna send to you when, when everything goes to shit, right? Um, so know your values, at the same time collaborate. And know the difference between power and influence. I, I don't have to have power to influence, right? And managing ambition also with what's right and what's wrong. There, there's, there's a lot of things that come into play, bro.
I'm just saying.
I'm trying to be a real guy, bro, I'll be honest with you.
Yeah, I'm just trying to be a real.
Whatever happens, man, I, I don't even care if I get re-elected, don't get re-elected. But in four years' time, I want people to say, Mohammed was a community-oriented person. He cared about everything that he, you know, that, that he spoke about. And I'm accountable for everything that I do, and I understand that very well.
I just think, I just, I personally think, on an individual basis even, it's just exhausting on you if you're looking every day, new issues, new stuff. It's like, yo, you gotta live a little as well. You need, you need, you need.
Oh, yeah, never take.
You need some positivity in your life. You need positivity in your day-to-day.
You can't take work home with you. And that's one thing that I, I, I don't do.
Yeah.
That's when you get burnt out. But alhamdulillah, I've been doing this work since I was like seventeen, bro.
Yeah.
So, you know, how, how I see it now, you know, politics, it's another way for me to continue the work that I was already doing.
Yeah. I, I, I grew up, I'm not gonna lie to you, I've always grew up skeptical of politics and.
You should be, man, you should be, bro.
I grew up skeptical of politics and I still am, I'm very skeptical. But I always, I grew up skeptical about politics and I grew up skeptical about community work. Because how I always used to see it growing up was, I pick up on little things. I like, I like pick up on the indirect stuff, you know? And I picked up on the fact that every time election season comes, some guy rocks up that we've never seen before, runs a quick barbecue. And then there's these elders in our community that I come stand with them, take a picture with them. And then that guy gaps, yeah? Takes, he leaves, gets our votes, our community votes apparently, and we're just left with a couple of sausages. No Diddy. So I'm thinking like, that's how I always saw politics. What's the difference between doing how they used to do, where they, hey, we know this politician.
Yeah.
Uh, against, versus being the actual politician.
Okay, so I think politicians, a good politician is a local politician. So one that comes from the area, one that's born in Britain, right? So me, I've lived in the area for twenty years. I know my community. I went to school there, I went to high school there, right? And also, it's about being, um, genuine, and it all comes back down to being genuine. But I feel like when it comes to the African community, bro, we need to increase our political capital, right? Cause we do. We have, you know, obviously, there's a lot of us, a lot of professionals, you know, doing amazing work, but we all operate in silos. Everyone's kind of doing their own thing. But when you look at established communities, right, they have a peak advocacy group. Right? They kind of like know and organize their vote. So the thing that is very important for me over the next four years is how can I upskill, you know, um, certain community members to be more involved in utilizing the political capital that they already have. Cause there's three forms of capital. The social capital, that's how many people you know. That's how many people can you bring to the table? How many people will hold you up when your battle fall down, right? And then there's financial capital. Financial capital is how much resources do you have access to, you know? And both of them individually can increase your political capital. So now, I, I'll, I'll give you an example. Me being a councillor, um, I take it upon myself to be connected to my local sporting clubs. Because I know my sporting club, they, you know, they, they support a lot of families, maybe like a hundred families. And so if I'm speaking to the general manager of that club, I understand that I'm not just speaking to him, I'm speaking to all the families that he represents. Does that make sense? So that's the importance of community leaders, right? That have genuine connection to community and speak on behalf of the community. Because, trust me, a lot of politicians, when, when they do come for that sausage, right? They generally wanna come and like, I'm, I'm connected with that community, cause they understand the political capital you have, right? But it's then incumbent on the community and, and that, that leader on how genuine they are in terms of, and strategic as well.
And saying like, yeah, the sausage is iron enough, like what policies are you ready to make?
Yeah, 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 yeah. So we, we definitely need to be more, more strategic on how we do things and how we go about influencing change. But social capital, we have that in abundance. We need to increase our financial capital. We need to be more sustainable as a community.
Yeah.
Right? A lot of the established communities, they have, you know, obviously a lot of business people. And political capital, them two can, if we don't have elected representatives, they can influence that. And you know, alhamdulillah, you know, now I'm in council and in the future, we're gonna have a lot more.
Yeah, hopefully you get more. Alright, I'm gonna go through some plaques. You've won A M double A Youth of the Year, Young Volunteer Hub, is it Volunteer or Volt?
Volte.
Volte, yeah. Human Rights Award. You were the finalist of Young Australian of the Year. Spotlight Award as well this year, you won recently at the Maori Gala. What do these plaques and achievements mean to you? You did make a post saying, uh, man gives the award, but God gives the reward.
Hundred percent.
That was, that, that, that was.
That's a line and a half, that one.
That was a good twenty, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, like captioned.
Caption, yeah, yeah.
You know, nowadays you can't really do the caption, but twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and a couple hashtags peak.
Heavy, bro. How about this? That one caption got, I think, five hundred likes.
Yeah, Kaz. And then just, just the fire emoji or the, Kaz, I remember when the one hundred emoji was peaking. Yeah, just a couple of those. But what do they mean to you? What is, what is, what does these awards mean to you?
Yeah, bro, let me say it again, yeah. Man gives you the award, but God gives the reward. And I think that's something I've, I've, I've kept in my heart because it's very important that the work that I do is good work, you know what I mean? Cause not only is it gonna benefit me here, but it's also gonna bene- benefit me in the hereafter, you know what I mean? Cause at, at the end of the day, I am a Muslim and I wear that on, on, on my sleeve. So, um, and aw- awards used to mean a lot more when I was a kid, bro, you know what I mean? Like, maybe like four or five years ago, e- even in high school and I was doing a bunch of stuff. It used to be more then, but now you acknowledge that a lot more people should be on there, right? Cause at the end of the day, I can sit here and say, oh, you know, I'm a councillor. But I would never be a councillor if it wasn't for my English teacher that took me to speech therapy, for example. And I wouldn't be here, um, without my mom, you know what I mean? That was literally campaigning and, um, you know, l- l- letterboxing. And, and, and supporting me and my friends and so many people that played a key part, but above all else, I would not be here without Allah, you know what I mean? And so acknowledging all of that obviously makes you more humble, but with that, I can do this work for a very long time.
Would you consider yourself a role model? You know, doing, you do, you do school visit, you do a lot of school visits and you do a lot of posts on Instagram, Kaz. You like to post with the youngins, Kaz. You know what I mean? Do you, would, would you consider yourself a role model?
Look, I won't consider myself a role model, right? But if there's anything from my journey that anyone can seek inspiration from, I welcome it, you know? And, and, and there's nothing, I think inspiration is the biggest thing that can create change. A lecture is not gonna go anywhere. You have to show people, right, um, the destination, right? You have to, and I think for our younger community, right, I was, I was, I was with, I was with my cousin, right? Youngin, probably fourteen years old. And I probably haven't seen him for, for like a year. So I, I go to their house and I'm, I'm chatting with him. I'm like, oh, you know, what are you doing now? What do you wanna do in the future? And he was like, I wanna do what you do. And I think the first time it actually hit me, like, you know, there's, there's, there's actually kids out there.
They're watching you.
That are watching me and saying, you know, I, I wanna be a councillor now. Or maybe I wanna get involved in, in, in community work. So it obviously comes with a lot of, a lot of responsibility. But yeah, if anyone can take any inspiration from the work that I do, um, I think that's, that's a part of the process.
What, what do you reckon, um, I don't know, cause I personally see you as a role model for young people. I think young people should say, hey, look, you're.
If Mohammed can do it, I can do it too.
If Mohammed can do it, I can do it. And if Mohammed can do it, I can be, I can be Prime Minister.
Exactly. I, 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 I wanna, I, I want, you know, people to be better than me, you know what I mean? And cause understanding that the battles that I'm facing now, you know, a lot of it, no one might ever see.
Yeah.
And I remember twenty twenty-three, I went to a business leader's lunch with President Obama. And I, I'll be honest with you, bro.
Oh, I've seen that, but he's, did you meet him? Like, did you shake his hand?
Like, you know what I mean?
He was like, he was on stage.
Yeah, yeah.
You were row six. I saw the story, Kaz, I saw the story.
Yeah, yeah. So, and it was only four or five, like, young people were invited. And, 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 and I was one of them. So it was for like the business leaders from, from across Australia and stuff. And Obama was talking about how he lost his first congressional race. And he also said, you know, it took him twenty years to be an overnight success. So people see their destination, but they don't see the, 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 the journey that it took to get there. Um, so one thing that I took from that is the importance of, you know, not giving up. I think as a community, a lot of ourselves object. We say, if I don't, if I don't know the outcome, if I can't see a way of me succeeding, I'm not even gonna put my hat in the ring. You know what I mean? So I think we need to change that. And our sisters do it a lot more. Um, I, 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 I think it's, I, I think it's, um, it's a psychological, um, in terms of men and women. Uh, men take more risks and, 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 and girls wait till they're one hundred percent capable to take any step.
Yeah, yeah.
Any opportunity, whatever it is, right? So I think we need to remind ourselves that we are capable and back ourselves, cause we're not our biggest supporter, who is, you know what I mean?
I, I think the, the, the line that I always say is, you always miss the shoots, uh, shots you never take.
Exactly. And success is on the other side of this is hard. You gotta make yourself uncomfortable, you know what I mean?
I know this guy's got, I know this guy's, hey.
You know, you said this before, yeah?
You know, hey, I know this guy in his photo, in his photos, uh, on his phone, he's just got a bunch of wallpapers with.
Come on, man, shout out the top, man, come on, man.
Grind, wake up. Grind today, Kaz. Homeboy listens to like Nipsey Hussle, Kaz. Look, this is a topic I like to sometimes speak about. And you've spoken about it a couple of times, you know what I mean? And you work with young people. There is a stigma amongst young people. It's not even just, it's, it's all kids right now that are just running wild.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's, let's keep it a buck, these kids.
Hundred percent, yeah.
These kids need, I say it a couple of times, I make the joke, but these kids need the belt. I've been saying this joke, but sometimes I'm, a couple of people tell me, hey, I heard you say it a couple of times on the episodes. They believe me, guys. But they're like, look, everything, but not, not necessarily that, but there is an issue in the direction of young people. And you work with a lot of young people. I think you're, you're more engaged day to day, on a day to day basis with young people. What's going on?
Bro, you, cause you said it right. Like shit's wild, you know what I mean? A lot of these youngins now are just moving a lot different to how we used to move. You know, when, when, when we were younger. I'll give you an example, bro. When I was in high school, even if I sought twenty men, you know what I mean? Like I knew that, okay, if I got jumped, I wasn't gonna lose my life, you know what I mean? There, there, there wasn't that sense that, oh, like I might die. But now you have a lot of kids that are carrying some very serious, you know what I mean? Um.
They got the shanks. They got the shanks in the machine, easy stuff. They got swords, bro. The, cause I'm not lying to you. I'm, the swords I've been seeing lately, it's crazy, bro.
So, but look, no, but we need to understand that there's a cycle, you know what I mean? A lot of these kids that, that are in high school right now, a lot of decisions they're making, they're not making with the holistic approach of outside of, when I finish school or when I start a family. Their entire life is surrounded around their friends and their school. That's where their life is, you know what I mean? And you start to see a lot of the times, you know, they, they might, might enter the justice system, you know, reach, might, might even go big boys, but then they start to realize, fine, you know, now I have to start a family, now I have to find work and now it's me. That's when the realization kicks in. So I think we need, we need to do better as a, as a, as, as a community, um, by working with restorative justice. Cause a lot of what's happening now within our youngins is to do with beef, you know what I mean? Beef between the areas, beef between like, you know, like families and on, on all this stuff. So as elders, as, as you know, all the brothers, all the cousins, all of that stuff, we need to be the ones to actually, you know, like sit these kids down. Like, like have certain conversations and there's obviously certain conversations that you can't have. But when we look at a systems pers- perspective, we have to understand what causes a lot of this stuff. And education is a big one, bro. And I know Mary when I was here last time, I've touched on it a lot, but it definitely is. There is a clear connection between education and lack of education and, and, and leaving and dropping out in prison. Because I, I, I'll give you an example from, 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 from my personal life, right? When I was in year nine, bro, I was a bad kid, right? I was getting suspended. I was getting in fights, you know what I mean? I was like fifteen, sixteen around there. Well, I was like a very bad kid, cause I had my stutter. Right? For those that don't know, I had a very severe stutter, um, debilitating. And obviously I used to get bullied and obviously, you know, I mean, as, as, as a sixteen year old kid, I, I wasn't allowing that.
Cause I know, I know.
It was either, it was either me or them.
I know one of the jokes was spinning out, guys. Hey, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna, all these kids just looked at it while, I was trying to talk, they're like, mate, just spit it out. You just thought that's the way you get there.
Yeah, bro, I was swinging, I was swinging first and ask questions later.
Yeah.
But that obviously came with a lot of stuff. Then when I went and, you know, um, speech therapy, I now had the opportunity to actually like join extracurricular activities. But I would never have done that if it wasn't for the support of people around me, you know what I mean? And my older brother, Allah, until this day, I would say he's one of the biggest impacts on my life, cause he bring that discipline, you know what I mean? He bring that, you know what I mean? Like, oh, I've been there, you know what I mean? This, that, that, like, this is how you should move. Like he, bro, he bring, he took me with him every single time he went to the mosque, you know what I mean? Um, um, we used to have, you know, that is at the house that he used to let me lead, you know what I mean? About, about sincerity, about, you know what I mean? About like the, the stories of the prophets, you know, we used to read the Quran. So I, I got that from home because of my older brother. And when I was at school, I got that from the support I received from my teacher and, and the, and, and the school. But I was lucky, bro. Because I didn't think a lot of the people that I grew up with.
Generally.
Had that same thing that I had that allowed me to say, you know what? Maybe I can do certain things. Maybe there's another path for me. Cause there was a lot of people celebrating that.
I, you know, I personally disagree with one thing. I think, I agree with like what, your perspective. But I think there are those opportunities and stuff. You just gotta ask. That's what I think. I think people don't ask.
But, but you look, you know what it is? Because young people aren't met, aren't, they, they need to be met, you know, at their stage. So me, a lot of my stuff was preventative, do you get it? I wasn't at that stage where Halas, like I was, I, I've entered the justice system already. But I was going there, right? A lot, a lot of the people I grew up with, bro, you know what I mean? I faced prison for some very serious, for, for some very serious stuff, you know what I mean? So, you know, th- there was a possibility that I was heading, headed in that direction. So we just have to find out, you know, where are these young people at and, 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 and meet them there.
I think it's case by case then.
It's case by case. So when a young person, right, gets out of juvie, Allah, trust me, right? They get out of jail, what are the conversations I'm having with them? You know, they're actually telling me, Mohammed, you know, I wanna get a job. I wanna do this. I wanna, but they don't understand the implications of their actions and going into, you know, serving time has actually done for that. You know what I mean? Now it's not gonna be easy getting a job, alright? It's not gonna be easy doing the things now that you wanna do, having lived the consequences of your actions. And that's why we need to do the better as a, as, as a society. When someone comes out, what is the wraparound support? That is making them, you know, back themselves. Because the two weeks they might stay at home, they might not meet the boys, whatever it is. But after two weeks, they read like, ah, I can't get a job. I can't do this, whatever. They answer when they're cool, right? And where are they?
Repeat.
They're repeating. And listen, listen, and listen, listen, listen. Guess what's happening? When, when they're there, randomly, something happens and they're, they're back in again.
Yeah.
Wrong place, wrong time. I've heard so many stories, bro. Allah, I've, I've even had, had, had some boys tell me like, you know what I mean? Like, you know, like I wanna do something else, but I, I'm basically trapped. So I think as a community.
I'm not gonna lie to you.
We have a role to play and we have to understand a, 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 a lot of the trappedness obviously comes from beef that, that, that they're already involved in. And you can't really.
I personally think.
Look, there's a lot of factors, bro.
And I personally, we can go for, we can go for hours, cause we're gonna wrap the podcast up. But I personally think there's circumstances where it's your decision at the end of the day.
Hundred percent.
You live your own life, you take that breath subconsciously, you breathe, you move.
But at the end of the day, what I, what I disagree with you for is that we should never give up on a young person. There, there are certain cases, there are certain cases, right? When, but, but by young people, I'm, I'm talking about, like, you know, I mean, under twenty-five, you know what I mean? Obviously sometimes, you know, there's a lot of cases where people are answerable for their own decisions, you know what I mean? Me, when I'm working with young people, at the end of the day, what you've done is what you've done. I'm a big believer that if you decide tomorrow, I wanna be a different person, right? You have the support ready for you to access and you have actually people in the community, you know what I mean? That are prepared to support you.
I agree with that. No, no, I'm not saying, I agree with that.
But it's having that initiative and that leadership to say, you know what, I wanna, and, and acknowledge what you've done.
No, no. Acknowledge what you've done. Tell yourself, it was my fault.
My fault. Yeah, and I have the accountability, accountability.
That's the problem with young people right now. They don't have the accountability of saying, it's my fault.
I hear it, yeah.
No, no, but that person did this and hey, that, I, I wasn't there and that's, you were there. You did it. You take accountability, take it on the chin, you know what I mean? You be, it's you at the end of the day. I think a lot of young people have this thing of always finding some scapegoat to blame and it's just a massive, and then they find themselves in a cycle. Until you can look at yourself in the mirror and say, hey, you stuffed up, let's change from now and take accountability for myself, that's when change can happen.
Yeah. Hey, I was, I was watching TikTok, yeah? And there was a, there's a new term going around. It's viral. I don't know if you've seen it. Black fatigue?
Ah, I've heard about that.
Heard about that?
I'm not, I'm not on the Twitter, what is it?
Huh?
On the Twitter spaces.
It's on like Twitter and, and, and like TikTok and stuff. Is there anything we, we, we can chuck on?
Yeah, definitely. Just write on, uh, ChatGPT, cause we've got like five minutes left.
So there's two terms, yeah? There's, there's, there's one that's used, um, that, that's trending right now on TikTok. It's when, it's when people have had black fatigue, in terms of like how black people act and stuff like that.
So the tide of how black people act?
How tired of how black people black?
This is some Twitter, black fatigue is a term used to describe the conical mental, emotional and physical exhaustion experienced by black people due to the repeated exposure to racism.
That's.
Kazzy, I know some liberal lies, American, black girl in Harlem made it.
But that's an old definition, actually.
That's, that, yeah, that's the old definition, but the new one that they're coining is when, is when.
Oh, like non, non-black people like saying it.
Non-black people and black people as well.
I just say, I'm, it's like I'm sick of niggas.
Basically.
They, 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 it's, I'm sick of niggas, Kaz. Is that what black fatigue is?
That's, yeah, in, in, in general terms.
In a general term.
So I just, I just wanted to say, bro, what's your thoughts on that?
What?
In terms of, bro, you're not gonna understand if you have more than TikToks.
Man, I've seen, I've said this in like episodes heaps of time, like back in the days, like jokes and stuff. But like, I always say, there's a difference between black people and niggas. There's niggas, it's a Chris Rock joke. And I said it, there's niggas and there's like a certain way of acting and fulfilling a stereotype and being something that's not you. And then there's black people. Black people are individuals, they can, they do whoever they wanna be. They're expressing themselves, how they wanna be. They, they grow up with family values and they're just, there's black people. Pay taxes, have a business thr- thr- thrive, you know what I mean? And then there's, there's a couple of brothers that fall in between, cause sometimes they lean to being a nigger, sometimes they lean to be, be a black person. I'm one of those people that leans, sometimes I act like a nigger, sometimes I act like a black person.
But, but please explain that to me. What does that mean though?
It, it's a stereotype. It's a joke. It's a joke. I'm just, I'm just playing on the joke that Chris Rock did.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think there is this idea of, uh, for example, like a stereotype of black people and sometimes people do fulfill that stereotype.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Facts, facts. So the, the, look, the reason why I said that is because, um, it comes back to the conversation that we were having. I think, you know, um, racism plays a big part on, on the entire, you know, where we find ourselves in as a community, you know what I mean? If we look at our youth, if we look, if we look at our elders, you know what I mean?
Hundred percent.
I think racism is intertwined in whether it be in interactions we've had with police, interactions we've had in workplaces, right?
School.
Schools, right?
Community, yeah.
I think it's so in, in intertwined where that needs to be addressed, um, at a systemic level, but also.
At an individual level.
Individual level, you know what I mean? And, 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 and I think this play on like black fatigue, it adds to that. You know what I mean? So.
I get it. I get, I get what you're saying. I need, I need to look into the black thing. I just need to get back on socials properly, man. I've been, uh, my screen time's been really low right now. That's why I don't know what's going on.
From Umar, yeah?
Yeah, amazing, bro. I loved it, bro.
Bro, Umar was one of the best feelings Allah told us they have ever had.
Yeah.
Bro, I was in the Rawa, yeah? And I was, I didn't, you know, stood like out there. Allah, you have this here, was one of the first prayers ever, where I was not thinking about nothing, like there was nothing in my mind. Yeah, it was pure tranquility, you know what I mean?
Man, that's what it is.
And it's, you know, being there around, you know, millions, cause I went during Ramadan, but I also went, you know, towards the end of the year, around, around, like, around like New Year's and stuff. And being there with millions of people and you look around and you probably be to speak to this about as well. So many people from different walks of life, different experiences and, and, and everything, bro. So I, I, I only had an amazing experience.
I think it's the mission statement. Check out our last episode. I spoke about it. The episode before that, actually, I spoke about my Ahmed experience. But I think it's the idea of having a mission statement and that's where everyone comes there, has an idea like, oh, this is why we're here. You know, the, the worship of Allah, you know, alone. Um, I want to wrap it up right now, but what does Muhammad Semra look like in twenty thirty-five?
Is that ten years?
Yeah.
Bro, I had a really good quote. Let me, let me. Let me go.
First Prime Minister, yeah?
First Prime Minister.
So I have a credit Instagram, right? It's all about the big picture. Let's see where we're at a decade from now. So I'm definitely, you know, now more than I ever have thinking more strategic around, you know, where I wanna go and the impact I wanna make. But also what it looks like taking my community with me, you know what I mean? Cause obviously now I am privy to a lot of, a lot of, you know, um, understanding of the process, understanding of, you know, politics and stuff. So while I have my own ambitions, you know, and it might be cliche, but I really wanna us to grow as a community. And I think there's a small role that I can play in that. So in, in ten years from now, you know, hopefully I'm still doing, you know, good work, married with a family, Insha Allah. And, and, and yeah, bro, that's, that's where it's at.
Muhammad Semra, thanks for jumping on. Counselor Muhammad Semra, actually. Thanks for jumping on, bro. Uh, it was amazing. I hope someone gets inspired by this. I know a lot of people are gonna be watching this and, uh, inspired by what you do. And Kaz, it's good to give, it's good to give you a platform where you're able to speak on what you do freely instead of, you know, those two, three minute clips or videos that you do. You know what I mean? It's a, it's a full conversation and you get to see the, I think these long form content, you get to see the human side of someone. You get to see whether you really like someone or not. And I'm, I know the Deves and Davies probably watching right now, probably like, yeah, we like this guy. And if you're in the Mariborong City Council group, next in four years, make sure you vote for him. But besides that, Deves and Davies, hit the subscribe button, check out his page, see where his amazing work he's doing. Besides that, enjoy your day, enjoy your night, stay humble.
Faith.